Here, I got it covered.
I better get this in order because it's all out of order.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna stay out.
Yep, Ms. Goldman. What is fifteen? Right here.
Hm?
Brent.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Notice was given of this regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of All Persons for this Thursday, April 12th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the courtroom at City Hall. We have an agenda. First item is a call to order. Moment of silence, we're gonna have an invocation. And during that moment of silence, of course, we pay special tribute to Master Trooper Steve Wallace, who was employed with the Bastrop Police Department from December 14th, 1992, to October 13th, 1995. He went on to, Steve went on to work for the State Police. And he was a master trooper when he retired. And then we're gonna follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna ask, after the moment of silence, Councilman Robert Shaw, Chair of our Finance Committee, to lead us in prayer. And we're gonna ask Mayor Protem, City Councilman Marvin Moore, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to this great country. So shall we all stand for a moment of silence?
Our Heavenly Father, we just lift you up tonight and thank you for your many blessings that you've poured out on us, Lord. We just lift up the Wallace family at this time, Lord, and we thank thee for his service. And we just pray that you would comfort the family during this time. Lord, be with us tonight as we do our meeting. We pray that we do it with thoughts of developing and improving our community, Lord. Make it very positive. We ask for your help in that. And, Lord, we just thank thee for this opportunity to serve. And we pray that you would help us as we go through the agenda. And we ask all these things in the name of Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Ms. Goldman. May we have a roll call?
Here, Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Present.
Oh, present, Mayor. Now, I do wanna make a correction. Master Trooper was with the city from '88 to '95.
And not '92 to '95. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Goldman. 1988 to '95.
Right.
Thank you.
We're gonna recognize two kids just got burned up also.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we lost, thank you. Mr. Prater brings up a point that we, we, oh, by the way, we do have a quorum, and the meeting is now in session. We lost two young men on the corner of Snyder and Mc...
Just Gillis or something.
McAfee.
Yeah, McAfee.
McAfee.
That is the fourth child that we've lost in the last six or so months. We lost one and an adult on Broadneck Street. We lost one on the Marouge Collison Road, one young lady, one little girl. And we lost two. And we've done all that we could, Fire Chief Crowder and our Fire Prevention Officers and all of our captains, we've done all we could to alert people to the necessity of having smoke detectors at a minimum in their homes. We brought, in October, we observed National Fire Prevention Week. We called the State Fire Marshal and had Sparky, the fire dog, here. And we worked with Ms. Sellers and the school board to go to different schools. And we ran them through our smokehouse and we talked fire prevention. We offered, we got free batch of fire, 200 or so, smoke detectors from the State Fire Marshals to give out. And we still had homes unprotected. So, Mr. Prater, as we pay tribute to these two young men, six and seven years old, who lost their lives along with the other two children and one adult, that's five people too many for us. And we're doing all we can with fire prevention. And we want you, if you're watching this broadcast, if you're in the audience, if you know of anyone that needs smoke detectors, then call 318-283-3353. We will come out, the Fire Department, we've got a great Fire Department, a fabulous Fire Department, that's high morale, high energy, a bunch of individuals. And they will come to your house and put these, install these smoke alarms or detectors in strategic places. We have to install them for you to get them free because we wanna make sure that they're in the right place. So, thank you, Councilman Prater, for acknowledging the two young men who lost their lives. And I don't believe that any of the homes that were burned, any of the three homes, had detectable, smoke detectors in them. So, I don't believe they did. I went to scenes and, you know, it's not official, but we need, we can't stress that point. We can lose property, that's one thing, but when we lose lives, that's quite another. Thank you, Councilman Prater. Are there any other announcements? Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda? If there are no public comments, Item 5. Approve previous minutes of the regular meeting held on March 8th, 2018.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
It's been moved.
Seconded motion.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke and seconded by Mayor Protem Councilman Moore that we approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved. Item 6. Finance Committee report, Resolution 18-1761, Bills and Claims for the month of March 2018. Councilman Shaw.
Mayor, we have reviewed the Bills and Claims Report for March of 2018 and also the Revenue and Expense Report for February of 2018. And I move that we accept this and pay these bills.
It's been moved by Councilman Shaw.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Locke that we honor the Bills and Claims and that we pay the bills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Shaw. Item 7. February 28th, Revenue and Expense Reports. Do we just do that?
We just do that.
Good, good.
Combine them.
Combine them, six and seven.
That's okay, Ms...
Thank you. That's efficiency.
Right.
That's great. Okay, Delinquent Occupation License Report.
Mayor, that's just a reporting...
Report.
Okay, it's on here, so no action necessary. Mr. Ronnie Harris, Civic Source. Mr. Harris, would you come up, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Allow me to introduce myself as Ronnie Harris. I serve as the Director of Business Development for Civic Source. And the first thing I would like to do is to thank the City of Bastrop for being a longtime client of ours for your tax sale services. Ms. Goldman and I have chatted and our account representative has stayed in close contact with you. It seems as if the job is being done and the tax sales are being completed as expected. At the conclusion of last meeting, evidently, we had gotten some word that the City Council, at the mayor's recommendation, requested to rescind, I'm sorry, to cancel the contract between Civic Source and the City of Bastrop for adjudicated properties. Now, I did some research to find that our initial presentation occurred in September of 2016. And since that time, you've had an election, a couple of you are brand new. And for the other three, although you may not necessarily remember exactly what was said at that meeting. So, if you may, would allow me to just state what our services prize are. It's very simple. The first thing that you need to know is that no cost to the city. The second thing is that should there be any legal challenge, Civic Source indemnifies you in the process. Now, what process are we speaking of? Well, certainly for the audience, adjudicated properties come about when, A, a person does not pay taxes; B, goes to tax sale and no one purchases the property with a tax sale certificate. It is therefore adjudicated to the governing authority, in this case, to be the City of Bastrop. Once it's adjudicated, no more tax bills are sent out. And therefore, you are the custodian of the property. You are not the owner, which is good news because you're not liable for anything that occurs in these properties. Civic Source has developed a program where we comply totally with Louisiana law, not to a governmental standard, but to an insurability standard. We take the list of properties from the assessor. We filter it by reviewing within the court records if the property, A, is truly adjudicated. Number two, it needs to be marketable. In other words, of size, because sometimes you have little slivers of property. Sometimes they're mobile homes. We don't handle those types of properties. But say you have a real piece of property, and oftentimes, it's white. We understand that. If no one's paying taxes, chances are, they're not cutting grass, they're not fixing the building, that sort of thing. So, what Civic Source does is that we place it on a map on our website. This map reflects the location on a Google map that can be looked at either by listing view or a map view, including satellite. So even if it's a vacant piece of property, we have a red dot on that property that shows property owners and investors, this is the problem, this is the property that we're talking about. So, number one, we're educating the public that you truly have adjudicated property and they are available for purchase through the auction process in a general auction or for sale by the, to the adjoining landlord. So you have a couple of means to eliminate these properties. So, that's the process. We, once an investor places a deposit, that's when we begin the heavy lifting of research to find out who really owns this property. I often speak with Grandma Jones, and you know her, she died 20 years ago. Mary, the daughter, has been paying the taxes, but something happened to Mary. Meanwhile, her daughters and sisters know that Mary takes care of family business. Well, they're clueless. When we come in and start notifying people after an investor has shown interest by placing a deposit, we research the owner's name, we notify them, I'm sorry, we skip tracing to find out where they live, and we notify them both by certified mail and first-class mail. Statewide average, it's about 25% of the time, the families get together, come in and pay all, 100% of the back taxes penalty and interest. And that all goes to the city. If it is not redeemed, then the process continues on. And for properties that are adjudicated for five years of grace, that's the properties we're talking about here, the properties are then available for sale after notification of the owner of 60 days. So, a person places a deposit, it takes about two months for us to do our work, then another two months for the 60-day notice, and we go to auction or sale to the adjoining property owner. The, we held an auction every first Wednesday of the month. And the successful bidder basically goes to close by the end of that calendar month. And at that time, this is the most important thing. Because we do it not to a governmental standard of what the law requires, we do it to an insurability standard. We have worked with an affiliate company called the U.S. National Title Insurance Company. And title insurance is offered on that property to the owner. So what does this mean? Basically, a clear title, so that they can go to the bank and get financing. Or when they go to sell it again, they have the comfortable feeling of knowing that the next purchaser has the ability to buy the property without the encumbrances. Now, we provide this service statewide, obviously. We have approximately 32 parishes, we have a number of municipalities. I've handed out with you a brochure that one shows the process, another shows the client list of all of our clients throughout the state of Louisiana. We also have some clients in Missouri and Tennessee. And also statistics. This program has been in place for about a little over two years. We have addressed nearly 2,700 properties statewide. Through paying the cost, the surplus revenues generated and redemptions, this tolls over $33 million statewide to local government. So, we've had a great success story elsewhere in the state. But what does that mean for the City of Bastrop? Well, number one, I think that there needs to be education of the public so that the investors understand what they get for their money. I did have an opportunity to listen to the video meeting, and thank you very much for having that service because it was very informative for me. When an investor says, "Look, I've looked at the Civic Source site. I'm interested in that property, but I'm not willing to pay what Civic Source is asking for," which is cost, that's our cost, it's the minimum. The minimum bid on our process is cost, and it's all listed on our website. So it's not a number picked out of the air, it's fees earned for the services that we provide. But if a person says, "I don't want title insurance, I just wanna park my truck on the property next door to me." You can pull that property off of our site. Why? We're non-exclusive. You can do business with whoever you want. It's not a must-do thing that you have to do business with Civic Source. That is not the price of the property that anyone sets. The price of the property actually is zero. The cost is the amount that we have earned. So if a person goes to a local attorney, number one, there's a number of things that you need to be aware of. That should there be any legal challenge, certainly the investor is wondering maybe, I don't know how it works in the legal aspect, I'm not an attorney. But I do know this much, is that when Civic Source does the work, we indemnify you in case there's any legal challenge. Number two, on the open market, if they try to get title insurance, they will not be successful, and I'll tell you why. In my previous life, I was mayor of the City of Grover. And Act 819 of the 2008 legislature was passed, and it's a cookbook recipe. You can do adjudicated properties if you have the time and the resources and the money. Because, again, we front all of the costs under our contract. So, when you do it, you would have certain costs the city obviously should be reimbursed by the investor because the investor usually pays all the time, whether it's to you or to us. But the indemnification clause has a lot of value. The concept of getting these properties back into commerce is very important. And your investors need to know. We had an information session in Bastrop, 14 individuals, RSVP, only three showed up to the session. So without a doubt, there needs to be more education. But the reason I'm here this evening is to ask you to rescind your action of canceling our contract. Why? There's absolutely no downside by continuing to have the contract available. At the end, you're giving your constituents an option, a choice. You can have a local attorney, yes, at a cheaper price, or what Civic Source provides where everyone gets protected. And the services are done, including after the sale, the title insurance protects that investment in the future. Many of you may not have recalled exactly what we have provided. Our statistics show this. I did stop by the Morehouse Parish Assessor's Office. For both Morehouse and City of Bastrop, there's 540 adjudicated properties throughout the parish. The number that I believe is pretty close, I believe the mayor of Grover did, is 212 is in the City of Bastrop. We have listed on our site 64. Now, the main reason we have so, well, just that percentage, 212, and you only list 64, is that many of these properties don't have adjudication certificates. We don't know where they are. They're not necessarily filed with the clerk. And we've asked for assistance to wherever y'all can find them because that's what starts the time clock to tick, the three-year redentive period after a tax sale, but the five-year period for us to sell the adjudicated property. For the 64 properties that you have, without Civic Source, I don't know how you would express to the public where these properties are. And by the way, we not only posted on the website, we put a for-sale sign on the property. What I do wanna make known to you, and I'll try to close with this, is that when a person says, "I don't want Civic Source, I wanna go here," and that's fine, pull the property down. We do request that our earned fee of $175, that's the fee that we have charged for filtering the review in the court to make sure that that property is truly adjudicated as well as listing on our website. So, at the time of the cost being paid, that we would ask the city to collect those costs that we have expended in that adjudicated property. The bottom line is this, there's no downside. You advertise to everyone and you give your constituents the choice. We will never send you a bill. Should... Excuse me, I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yes. Anyway, the aspect is very simple. We would like to keep your business. You have been very satisfied with what we have done with our tax sales. We are having tremendous success elsewhere. I think, given time and education to your public, your investing public, we would like to make sure that our information session, we reach out to those people who purchase tax sales, both in the city and the parish, because they're interested in these governmental properties. So I think that would be a good start. But obviously, real estate agents, anyone who's interested in properties, once they understand that the fees that we charge is, number one, that we address the legally required notification process; number two, we project what the closing cost will be; and number three, the premium for the title insurance, that's what makes up that minimum bid. That's when, when people look at the number, but they don't know what's behind it, they think, "Oh, that's expensive." But when they find out the value of the money on these properties, I think that they'll say, "Okay, now I understand," and now they can make a logical decision. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, Mr. Prater and myself, we are new, so who is responsible for the upkeep of all the adjudicated property?
Well, first of all, let me say that the owner always owns the property. When it's adjudicated, you are in custody of the property. So you're not legally required to do anything with that property except in the other parts of the law where you have to perform your public safety, health and welfare of the community. And squeaky wheels saying, "Hey, that lot next door to me needs grass cutting." As mayor, you know what I did? I went and cut the grass. And I billed the owner and I put the lien on the property.
So the city, pretty much.
And we never collected.
So the city is pretty much responsible for it?
Well, I'm not saying absolutely the city's required, but there's certain legal requirements, there's certain political concerns that you have. You wanna make sure that the health and safety of the neighborhood is in place.
Right.
Let me also say, I've mentioned all the good stuff about adjudicated property, how wonderful this is. But let me tell you about the bad thing.
Okay.
It sounds bad, but your back taxes, your penalty, your interest, liens, all go away when property's adjudicated, no matter who does it. Okay? So any investment that you make in a property, you may lose it, but let me tell you what you gain. Through the process, you're eliminating an irresponsible property owner. And I call it, say irresponsible for a number of reasons. They died, they don't exist, they moved away, they just abandoned Bastrop. The fact is, a person who's responsible, you'll get a tax check next December. That sounds good. And for every year thereafter, they're gonna be responsible for the property so you won't have to cut the grass anymore.
Okay, so once Civic Source sells a property, how much do the city receive from them selling a property?
It depends if it has competitive bidding. Because the option that we recommend that the city accepted, zero sales price plus cost. Now, that's only one option. You have two other options. You could go out and hire an appraiser and start the bidding at two-thirds of the fair market value. Gretna did that. You can still buy that piece of property in Gretna. Why? Nobody buys it that way. Second thing is add up all the back taxes and have that as a starting bid. Well, guess what happens? An investor, they don't wanna pay for the sins of the past. They just want a clean piece of property that they can invest in and do something with. So the third option, which is $0 plus cost, is the option that we highly recommend and has been most successful in our business model. So, the investment that you've made cutting the grass or the taxes that you're not gonna receive, you just consider that ancient history. You look forward, don't look in your rear-view mirror. You'll get a tax check next December. And look, that's not Civic Source's talk, and that's really state law.
Yes. Let me, you referred to the discussion that we had in the council meeting that you viewed. Let me state that we're not hostile to Civic Source. Civic Source does other services for us, and we're completely satisfied with those services, aren't we, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, we are.
Ms. Goldman? In fact, we have a check here that we just approved. Mr. Green, what was that amount that you asked?
Nine thousand.
Yeah, nine thousand and it's...
Eight hundred and seventy-five?
Yeah, $10,000 that we just wrote a check to Civic Source, or just Mr. Shaw's committee, the Finance Committee cleared the check because Civic Source does a lot of services for us. They mail out all of our, right? Delinquent notices. So when you get something in the mail from the City of Bastrop's taxes that's coming from this company, Civic Source. So the other, that's one contract.
Mayor, may I make a point of application? You act as a collection agent. Not one penny of that figure you just quoted is Bastrop city taxes. That is paid for by those people redeeming the tax sale or purchasing the tax sale. So that's a cost there, not the city. Just wanted to make a point.
Yeah, well, okay. The point was that we're not hostile. We're reasonable people. And Bastrop, tell me the cities that you have in Louisiana, from the largest down, say, the top five cities.
If you don't mind, take a look at the client list and all the things.
Okay.
It ranges from.
Lake Charles.
We have the town of Killiam, which is.
Right, yeah.
It'sy-bitsy, to the city of New Orleans.
Yes, let's go back to our two hundred, our two hundred and twelve blighted, or two hundred and twelve adjudicated properties. There's a great number of them that's blighted. Okay, it's alphabetical order over there.
Lake Charles, I saw.
Um, there are lots in Basterp that you probably have, that people, if we put a five hundred dollar for-sale sign on, some of them would not, quite a few of them would not sell. We have a low property value that doesn't match up to New Orleans, Shreveport, or Baton Rouge. A blighted lot in Baton Rouge naturally would go for a lot more than a blighted lot in Basterp, on a street in Basterp. I forbid not to call the name of a street. But there are, the City of Basterp has a tremendous blight problem that we're going to fix. And we have to make considerable investment. The budget calls for thirty thousand dollars for blighted lots, is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
It's a lot cleaning.
Yeah, lot cleaning and stuff. Well, we could spend a lot more than thirty thousand dollars clearing lots. The average is about ten lots a year that I think we've been able to do to clear of a burned house or something like that. Ten is not a good number, because we're adding more than ten a year. So we were never going to catch up to that. Now, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Our blighted property problem, we invested to fix that with more equipment and manpower and other things. The City of Basterp is not able to clean a lot up, and naturally, it runs up the price a little bit. But then, we can't eat that cost. So we felt that it was, it would be efficient that if we would put more teeth into it. Now, I can't account for the lack of marketing that other administrations did, but I think we know how to market some of these problems, particularly our lot next door problem. We have people all over this town who want that lot next door. I was on Curtis Street the other day, and Curtis Street and St. John's Street. And I was talking to a family who lived across the street. And they contacted the, I contacted the property owner in Baton Rouge, and they bought that lot from her. The house is in disrepair, but the next-door house is adjudicated, it's got a burnt-out house on it. They want that. We have so many of those situations that, that we're not going to clean up that lot, spend five hundred dollars or three hundred dollars to clean it up. We want to recover, and we feel we can recover so much of that, because we're local and we know the people. So that's something that I think is not factored into your presentation, is that we've been here seventy years, sixty years and fifty years, and we know people, and we feel, I feel, that we can move so many of these problems. Now, I'm not discounting that Civic Source couldn't be useful with your contract. If we take, let's talk about your fees as an example. The process goes, you mentioned cost. City gets zero, and your fees start in order for a person, they looked on your website and was interested. Is it true that they would have to pay eight hundred and fifty dollars to start the bidding process?
They placed a deposit of eight fifty to get the process started, which indicates that we have one person who's really interested in that property.
Okay, what?
And just to conclude, should anyone wish to bid against them, they don't have to place a deposit. They just register on our site and they place the bids.
Okay, let's talk about that process. John Doe pays eight hundred and fifty dollars.
John's interested.
And you say, okay, let's take this to bid. So you list the property, correct, and say this is, going to be a bid window, do you do that?
No, what happens is, once the eight hundred and fifty dollars is placed, now we've got to do what? We've got to notify the owners. Who are the owners? We don't know. We checked the court records, we checked obituaries, because of Louisiana Community Property Laws, we've got to contact all the heirs, all the interested parties, to say, you can redeem this property. There's only one course of action for them, is to pay their taxes, liens, whatever's in the, on the tax bill. The adjoining property owner can purchase that property without going to auction. But when John says, here's my eight fifty, we begin the work. And when the work is completed, that's when we go to auction, and that's when anyone can bid on that property. And being successful, that person will go to the close and receive the title insurance.
So if John don't, if he don't, if he get our bid, do he get his eight hundred and fifty dollars back?
Absolutely.
What if he don't reach the, the magic number that Civic Source would say, okay, well, well, suppose he bids twelve hundred and fifty dollars, and your cost is four thousand two hundred and fifty?
Well, his bid isn't recognized, because the minimum bid is the minimum bid.
Okay, so, and if that person changes their mind and say, I don't want it, do they get their eight fifty back?
If they don't perform just like any other good faith cause, no, they would not.
Okay, all right. You know, I could see certain properties being ideal. But as you stated, the majority of the properties in the City of Basterp, in most areas, in ninety percent of the areas, the person wants it to park the truck, as you stated, or to put their boat there, or to build a shed, that they're not going to go to the bank and try to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan. The construction of homes in Basterp, single-family homes in Basterp, or apartments, in the last thirty years, have been none virtually, except for housing projects. We have developers who will go and build thirty-four houses, they'll pave their own streets. We've got those kinds of developments, but we don't have the people to say, I want to build a single-family home on a lot where I actually need the insurance, where I actually need a clear title. Okay? And so many people are not interested in that. And meanwhile, we've got weeds, grass, looking like a jungle with snakes, rodents, heavy rodent infestation, people can't get rid of the rats in the wintertime. So we weighed the pros and cons. Now, of having properties listed, we know we're not going to get a dime, because most of the properties, the ones that we've sold, that you've sold here, the two, I'd guess, two probably?
I think it's one or two.
One or two, yeah, one or two.
Or the likely one.
Yeah, that, that to me is very slow progress.
It is, without education, it will be non-existent.
Yeah, well, obviously, the education didn't exist, or something was wrong, but we know it was not working for us to have all of these properties listed, no movement, and the weeds, the obnoxious weeds, the obnoxious things, snakes, and people are calling us saying, I can't kill the rats fast enough. I'm running, I've been up to the feed and seed store, and I've spent a hundred and thirty-two dollars on rat poison, and they're getting bigger, you know, every week. Go ahead.
If you allow me, I feel like a bobblehead, and I apologize, because as Mayor of Gretna, I know exactly what you're speaking of, because Gretna had the same problems. And the issue is this, number one, don't mix up blight for adjudicated properties. Oftentimes, they're a one-for-one match, without a doubt.
Sure.
But this isn't, the only solution that the sale of adjudicated property provides is you get a new owner out of the deal. Meanwhile, it will always be, the grass grows, the rats live, multiply. So we're not a solution for blight on a everyday basis. But when you invest and spend the money.
Let's talk about the blight on the adjudicated property, let's limit it to that. Because we have an answer to the blight if the people are there and paying the taxes. We've got an answer to that, you know, we have an answer, we, we have, the ordinance is, we can go and cut it and charge them, and they're going to pay it next December, or not, or not have the property. But the adjudicated property, you know, presents a different, a different challenge for us in that, in that, in that we have to invest, because we don't want rats and snakes in our communities. The more rats you have, the more snakes you're going to have. Okay? And diseases and all of that, we've got to think about public safety first. So the, the listing of a considerable number, the majority of our properties, is not advantageous to us right now, moving one property since the contract's been here. One property, probably. I've noticed that there was a bid, there was a process in February, and one, I think in March, maybe, and there was one sold. Civic Source, we don't envy you getting money, you do the service, you deserve the money. But we've got lots that, I think the average was, what, fifty-two hundred, forty-two hundred, somewhere in there, your fees, about five thousand dollars. We've got so many lots that people wouldn't give eight hundred dollars for, so we know they're not going to sell.
But I guess my question for the adjudication aspect is, how much will they pay for a private attorney? The number will be less, fine, but it's money that will be paid, that's cost.
Sure.
And so let me also offer this to you. These are your properties. Right now, we have listed sixty-four to show where they all are. We can say, which properties do you want to remove from that? You said there's a few that may get that price, well, number one, who's to say what motivates a buyer? That's why you should list them all. But also make it known that when someone calls City Hall, and I'll say this now, to the cam or whatever, take it off of our list. Say, you don't have to pay the fifty-two hundred dollars.
Suppose we took it off the list, suppose we took it off the list, what cost is still incurred by the person?
When, okay, right now.
For sure, one seventy-five.
Pardon?
One seventy-five, Steve.
Yes, one seventy-five is, now, we know that that property has been adjudicated, because we have an adjudication certificate on file in the courthouse. So we know that it's a viable piece.
That's the filtering cost.
Yes, and we will never build a rat, okay? We'll never build the City of Basterp. When an investor chooses to buy the property, and say that there's competitive bidding where there is a surplus, if we have some cost of a canceled property that's been taken down the list, then that money would be deducted from the surplus, but never anything out of your tax funds.
Well, we understand that. We, Basterp is not New Orleans, it's not Baton Rouge, it's not Shreveport. Property values, you know, the problem we have with people that live in California is that they've got a piece of property here, I'm using California as an example, and they've got a fifty by a hundred and fifty here that they think is worth fifty thousand dollars. Okay? When no one but the next-door neighbor probably would want it. The majority of the properties that I feel that are creating problems, the next-door neighbor would probably buy it, would probably pay something for it, if the city would sell it to them, because all they want to do is build a shed, a tool shed, that they're not going down to the bank and need a clear title to do, because they're probably going to do it out of their pocket, or through some personal loan process. So they're not going to build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, a hundred thousand dollar, sixty thousand dollar house on that property in ninety percent of the cases of the adjudicated properties that we have. Now, I can see, and I told you this on the phone when we talked the last time, that, that I can see a, some possible properties, if the city had a commercial piece of property that was clearly worth twenty-five thousand or fifteen thousand dollars, where your fees would be the four thousand or five thousand dollars, and then the buyer would be willing to pay some margin, and the city would get that margin, correct? Beyond fees?
Beyond fees, sure.
Beyond fees, yeah. Yeah, now, that is not a bad thing for the city, and we talked about that. Where I would not oppose that. Of course, I don't get to vote, these gentlemen are the ones that, that vote. So I, I think that there could be, that there is a place for the Civic Source service on those properties, but the vast majority of them, rather than just have them sit, what's that service? You know, I'm saying.
Lack of heaven.
Sorry. No, we don't have too many. But, but would you be willing to accept those that seem to clearly be reasonably worth at least your fees?
From day one, for whatever reasons the city decides, whatever properties you wish to give us, that's fine with us. We'll post those properties. If we have sixty-four, and you only have four, then take the other sixty off. Now, my question for you, and this is the challenge, how will your public know which properties are adjudicated that they can even invest in, and that's an issue that you would have to deal with?
Well, we have one answer for that, we have a website that we built, we have an information officer on staff.
Eighteen years.
Yes, yeah, we, we have, we have that, we have a website, we have our industrial properties that we're listing, the ones that are. So we've got a completely new website, we've got a web designer on staff that's never been on staff in the City of Basterp, and the information officer, who is very efficient. She has years of experience, and she's extremely good in database, so we can handle that. We can handle a list that shows an interactive map, that you click on it, and it'll bring up the Google map, and you can walk the man down the street and look around it, and even we'll update with, and show the property before and after, which is what we're doing. We go in there with our skid steer and our mulcher, and we mulch the property. And the day after, we mulched a lot on, when we were training on Commerce, two-twelve Commerce, they, the people came in and paid the taxes two days later.
That's great.
So the city got nine hundred dollars or so, six, seven hundred dollars?
Not quite seven.
Yeah, so that's what we want to do. We don't want to be inhibited, because we know that if we utilize the resources that we've gained, our skid steer out with our mulcher, and we go in there and we, we clean all of that, that, those obnoxious weeds and bushes and all those things off the property. The family texted me that night, they drove by the grandkids of the lady who had died, called and said, we'll be in Friday, can we still pay the taxes? And I said, well, Ms. Goldman will take money, she's very good at it.
Our number one goal is for people to redeem the property, and everything that you've said is really outside of what Civic Source does. You clean the property, they came in and paid, well, that's the normal course and scope of the business. Let me say, that's very unusual.
We hope, we hope we're unusual.
I hope, I hope you are too.
Yes.
And I believe, I'm not trying to be.
No, 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 neither am I, neither am I.
And so I congratulate you, and also recognize the public's knowledge of the responsibility that they have to the rest of the community.
Yes.
So that's a success.
And the, and the second, the second, and I'm going to hurry. The second lot that we trained on, we were just training our staff on the use of the Kubota, the skid steer, the mulcher. We went over on Boltner, and we did another lot. And the neighbors came out and said, I hadn't seen my neighbor's house in twenty years, I want to buy this lot. And the neighbor said, no, I want to buy the other neighbor. So that's what we want to do. Now, what I will do is ask the council, I'll poll them and see if they want to revisit this at our next council meeting. And if they so choose, then one of these councilmen, you're welcome, you've got all their numbers, I believe, you're welcome to talk with them, as you know, but I don't make the motions, I can't make a motion. They, they have to make a motion, and I can't vote. So these gentlemen are the keeper, go ahead.
Let me give you just one example. We went to DeSoto Parish, and you know what the police judge said?
What?
You charged too much money, nobody will buy this property. We sold twenty properties, and they actually didn't have a very large inventory. So we do have success stories.
I believe that.
For that.
I believe that.
So the concept of rescinding your action to allow the contract to begin, to continue, gives you these, these advantages. It's on our site, you have the knowledge that you're not, that we're not exclusive, you can pull it down at any time.
And our maximum exposure for pulling it down would be the hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Not yours.
Okay.
It's still zero, we don't bill you. But if you sit, when you sell that property, then the investor asks that you collect the fee that we have earned, which is the hundred and seventy-five dollars from there.
Would we have access to your paperwork on the hundred and seventy-five dollars on the, on the filtering? Could we, could we have access to that?
You have it right now, because you can click and see the adjudication certificate digitized.
Okay.
And when we do the notifications, every piece of communication out, every green card or return envelope, all of that's digitized and it's a click away. So we offer a lot of services just with our website to do it. But, look, the issue is blight, and I understand it. And if you are fortunate enough to be able to take your ordinances in and enforce, I've found that by attacking it through the court system, or, you know, I'll give you a good example. My sister lives in Slidell, my brother lives somewhere between Thibodeau and Albuquerque, and I'm in Baton Rouge. So who do you cite? That's an issue on the criminal side. But when you attack blight through ownership, you send. you send a certified letter to everybody wherever they live and say, "You're placed on notice." Now they have time that they have to react, if not, then the property will be sold.
Can the city buy the filtering from your company? Hundred and seventy-five dollars a, a lot?
Yeah, we could, but it, I mean, look.
So we could talk about that?
Yeah, we could talk about that, yeah. Look, any portion of our process, you can do an a la carte as well.
Okay.
Okay? And, and.
See, that never was told to us, that we could do a la carte. You know, to us, the, especially us new ones, we did not know that, that, that we could do a la carte. That we could say, "Hey, I want this service, this service, this service," on many of them, on selected ones. I know that you're gonna get your money if we sell it, correct? I mean, that's what we, we would intend to do.
Well, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, the concept of what we have is a progressive thing. You find out if you can sell it, then you notify, then you advertise, and then you sell.
We understand that.
That's the kind of progression, it kinda builds on one another. But we'll be talking about, all we're asking is that the cancellation of the contract be rescinded so that you at least get the benefit of our website and everything, and we have a total understanding, we're non-exclusive, you can pull that property down, give it to a private person, you can pull all the sixty properties and just give us four if that's what you want. Uh, which, let me tell you the, the secret. You don't know what motivates a buyer until the buyer figures out, "Hey, I know the marketplace, I know what I can do with that property," and suddenly they show an interest. Why? Your guess is as good as mine, but that is what's happened in the past. I understand the market conditions of Bastrop, we are not magicians and we're not miracle workers. If the property isn't worth it, it will not sell, but guess what? You're not selling it now. So you're no worse or no better off, with or without us.
Well, well, I think we're unusual, so, and I, I do understand and I respect your experience and your, and your, your presentation, and look, Mayor Hawkins, I think, may have introduced us, 'cause you all have a great relationship with LMA and you, you, we know your credentials are impeccable, so, and we know that Civic Source is a great company. So please don't, don't, don't interpret this as a slap. Uh, council, do you have a question?
No, we did speak earlier today, and I do have this card, we will have some further discussion. I told him I was not in a position today to suggest to the council to rescind this decision from the last council meeting.
Okay, councilman, do you have any last questions?
No.
Okay, no one. We will definitely look at it and look at all, I can see some advantages. I can see some clear advantages of certain properties, particularly those properties that are higher value that we think would bring at least the fees. But those that we know, those that we know wouldn't bring a thousand dollars, they're just gonna sit there. So we wanna take, we wanna, if we still have the contract, I'd wanna take all of those off, give it a shot, clean them up, and talk to those, you know, and do what, do what we do, what good marketers do. And I don't wanna talk about that on air, and they'd say, people say I was a...
Now, one of the things you could do.
Yeah.
Is that when you clean it up, and you wanna do a different minimum bid concept, you still have costs, but if you wanna capture your lien-to-back taxes, that is another option you can choose, but it just increases the cost of the asset.
Sure, sure.
And let me just say that I, I do look forward to your email address, 'cause I've got the email prepared to send to you.
Right.
About our discussion.
Thank you for driving all the way up here, and I'll tell Clarence that you were here. In fact, I'll send him a link to the video.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I wanna thank, uh, Board of Aldman for your time and your understanding, and I asked for your positive response to the mayor's request. And we like to keep your business adjudicated, because you never know what happens, so we'll see.
Okay, and thanks, and give our regards to everyone at Civic Source. We enjoy doing business with you, you guys do a great, great service for us with, with the things that you do. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Let's see, where are we?
Ten.
Ten? Ten, item ten, resolution eighteen dash seventeen sixty-two, a resolution authorized the city of Bastrop Louisiana to adopt the ad valorem millage rate for the tax year twenty-eighteen, Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, this is an annual thing, we're not gonna take action, we have to advertise that we're gonna do it in the next meeting. We'll either do it in a meeting, uh, May or June meeting, but this is so that we will be able to collect our tax rate for twenty-eighteen. The millage is written, the resolution for the same millage as we did last year, which is what the voters voted.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Goldman, for that report, the millage.
Go ahead and have the pairs of morehouse.
First. Okay.
First will be a button.
Well, I, um, I'll look at that, but I believe, I used what they told me to use because it is in the morehouse pairs, well, it's city of Bastrop, but I'll look at what you're talking about.
Yes.
And it, the correction will be made at our next meeting.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. The, the millage, of course, cities have, counselor, cities have the, municipalities, governments, political subdivisions. If there's a ten-mill tax, and it's generating more than the ten mills, as was Robert, our SOS tax, generated more, and we couldn't keep the money, remember?
Right.
We had to either call for an election to renew, or we'd have to roll back the millage because you can only, if you're gonna raise a million dollars and you have a millage to, then you can only raise that million, you can't keep a million in one. On the other hand, if a tax doesn't generate that million dollars, then you can increase the, the millage rate. But Ms. Goldman has informed us that there's no increase from last year to this year. Is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
That is correct.
See, we wanted the public to understand that, because we have a sales tax that is a sales tax proposition, there's three propositions on the ballot, Ms. Goldman. And I wanna make clear that this is, has nothing to do with that, okay? And early voting starts, and early votes starting this Saturday. And without these three issues passed, we can't pay, it's thirty-six percent of our income, correct, Ms. Goldman, about? It's over a third of our income, we couldn't pay police hours, we couldn't pay firemen, we couldn't pay public works, we couldn't provide a lot of the services that we provide. It would be sort of like stopping the government. So, I just wanna make that decision, and I wanna get a little advertising in, Robert.
It's a renewal, ain't it?
It's a renewal.
It's a renewal.
Thank you, councilman, can you speak into the microphone and say?
It was just a renewal, that's all, there's no new added tax.
Yes.
And it is for ten years.
It's ten years.
Mm-hmm.
All three. So I just couldn't resist getting that in.
Absolutely.
We want people to, to vote from early voting this coming Saturday until the next Saturday. So.
Right.
Yeah, fourteen through the twenty-first. And then the election day is the twenty-eighth of April. So we really need that vote of confidence in these fine gentlemen, the, the staff of, of our police department, our fire department, our public works. Please give us a vote of confidence, because we're working very hard to stretch every dollar. Number, number next.
Eleven.
Thank you. Item eleven, eight, a resolution eighteen dash seventeen sixty-three, a resolution of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, designate in April the second through April sixth as National Community Development Week, this is a very quick one. Uh, the governor's office in the state of Louisiana is joining other states and counties, parishes, and cities in being consistent, and this is just a resolution to designate, April second through April the sixth, which is already passed, as National Community Development Week. Do we have a motion?
Still move.
So moved by Mr. Locke, Councilman Locke, and second by Councilman Green, that we adopt this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passed, the resolution is adopted. Uh, item twelve, resolution eighteen dash seventeen sixty-four, resolution authorized the city of Bastrop through its mayor to make application to the USDA Rural Development Program for a grant in order to do a feasibility study and engineering study on the Ditto building. As you know, the Ditto building's been vacant for over twenty years. Vandal's has gone in and stolen all of the copper, all of the wire, and all stripped the air conditioners down. Uh, the building is wide open, uh, and we're gonna have to do some closing and securing that buil- building for insurance reasons and liability reasons. But beyond that, we wanna put that building back in service. We have some interested parties that are mostly local, who want to, who desire to, to put that building in a, in production and, and create. But before, we need a feasibility study to see whether or not this is feasible. So we're applying to the USDA Rural Development for a grant to get the study done. And we're asking the council to approve this resolution. And in addition, we're gonna ask for, we have another building that we need a feasibility study done on that we can't talk about. I mean, it's just natural not to. K. King knows that you don't talk about what's in, in the oven, right, Ms., Ms. King? Uh, you don't talk about what could be in the oven. So it's just common, we're not trying to hide anything, just you don't talk about nibbles because other communities watch this and say, "Hey, let's do that, let's contact those people that's interested in doing something in Bastrop." So, I'm gonna be asking in, to you to extend the agenda, gentlemen, and do the same thing for another, for another, uh, building as well. So, um, I'm asking also that, that we be able to match the feasibility study for this one, could run anywhere from fifteen to twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. We don't know the, the exact amount, depends on the amount of work. But I'm thinking that that's kind of a ballpark. And if we match it with a little money, then we get points for that. These are competitive bids, we throw our pieces of paper in the, into the harbor with other cities and counties and towns, um, and those, those applications are rated, ranked. And we definitely want to be, we wanna create some jobs here in Bastrop. This is economic development, it's the possibility of jobs, both these projects are a possibility of jobs, getting some more jobs in our community. And that's what we're about. So, I'm asking that, that you authorize us to include in the grant application to the USDA, a, an up to ten percent match with the maximum being five thousand dollars on both proposals, on both of these, if we do. Go ahead, Ms. Goldman, you wanna correct me?
Can we just take action on this?
We will. I just wanted to, I wanted to let, warn the council that we're coming back to the trough, okay? So, that was just to, so, uh, so we can do, I would like to stick with the five thousand dollar max on this building, and then when we ask for the other one, if you decide to extend it, extend the agenda. And then if you decide to pu- put the other one in, that the five thousand limit will still be there. You, you with me?
Yeah.
You with me? Ten percent, five thousand. So, uh, what's your pleasure, gentlemen? Do we have a motion?
I make that motion, Mayor.
I second.
Motion's made by Mayor Protem, uh, Councilman Moore, and second by Councilman Locke, that the motion, uh, that this resolution be adopted with the stipulation that, that the city of Bastrop would be willing to pay up to five thousand dollars or ten percent. Is that okay, gentlemen? Uh, any discussion?
Did you ask for money? What do we say at the beginning of the night, "No more money, Mayor"?
What you're saying to your, is, to your constituents is you're not willing to put a few pennies on the table with the prospect of getting jobs here, Mr. Prater, is that what you wanna? That's the message you're sending?
You didn't say that, Paul.
Okay. I just didn't know whether you wanted to tell district, what district are you in now? Say it loud.
Say it proud.
Yes, say it loud and proud. What district are you?
District B.
District B. Okay. I thought you wanted some jobs for the people of District B. We just say that District B voted against, and the job application was in favor of A, C, D, and E, and, and that. Yeah, but on, on the serious side, thank you, uh, thank you for the motion. I was moved by Councilman Moore, Mayor Protem Moore, is correct?
Yeah.
And second by Councilman Locke. Any discussion?
We are gonna cap it now on five thousand, right?
I would expect a question like that from the chairman of the finance committee. Yes, sir, we will cap it at five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? We're clear on the five thousand. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do we need a roll call so we can find out who we need to exempt from, no, I'm just, you know, who we need, whose district doesn't want any jobs?
He was coughing, Mayor.
What is that?
He was coughing.
Oh, he was, oh, okay. I thought he was objective, thank you. Okay, so the resolution passed, and we will make application to the USDA Rural Development. Thank you, gentlemen, for your vision and your confidence in this community. Um, thirteen, resolution eighteen dash seventeen sixty-five, a resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, the city, uh, to authorize the mayor acting, uh, in the stead, name and stead of the city to donate one nineteen ninety-eight Ford ambulance, serial number, uh, one F D W E three zero F five W H eight zero one four three one to the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Office, Chief Allen Campbell. Hello, Chief, how are you, sir? Can you get closer to the microphone, Chief, if you can?
I'm gonna allow more to carry.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Uh, the sheriff contacted me and also, uh, I'm calling the security guard, Deputy Scott Floyd. This is a ambulance that, I think in years past, Miss Sandra, correct me if I make a mistake, uh, was donated to the city that we use when we had narcotics officers as basically their response team for a vehicle that they were running account projects. We, uh, we don't have a per se narcotics officer, and the part of this vehicle at this present time, the vehicle has been maintained by the sheriff, but on our equipment law and law as far as we keep property insurance on the vehicle. So the sheriff, uh, reached out to them and said that they have a need for it, it'll still be accessible to the city and the sheriff's department. Here in Morehouse Parish, it's my understanding, they're gonna use it as a type of rescue vehicle slash response vehicle by the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Office. But they've been upkeeping the vehicle as long as my tenure as chief and then foreman. So, they had the vehicle in their fleet, taking care of it, oil changes, service maintenance, and we've only just kept it on our insurance law. The sheriff wants to use it in his, uh, aspect, and we will be donating a vehicle that we basically still have the use of should something happen. He's wanting to, for if they have rescues or such as that, it can support equipment, backboards, rescue, so.
What's your, what's your recommendation, Chief?
It is my recommendation that we honor the sheriff and his request, and that we donate this vehicle to the sheriff's department, because it can be in need for the whole parish and the city if we need.
Uh, gentlemen, uh, the sheriff's department, Sheriff Tubbs, uh, I think he's in good favor with all of us. We're so, we're blessed to have such a wonderful, such a fine sheriff as Sheriff Tubbs, and their department and, and Chief Campbell has gotten together on this request. What is your pleasure, gentlemen?
I make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Protem and Councilman Moore, and second by Councilman Shaw, that we adopt this resolution, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Fourteen, thank you, Chief, thank you very much, Chief.
One question, Mayor, before you move on?
Yes, sir.
Am I gonna be asked to draft the act of donation, or is the sheriff's office gonna be responsible for that?
Uh, yeah, I would think that being the city's council, it would probably be a question by you.
I think the driver license plate said we could, the mayor would sign the title, we give him a regional, a resolution.
DMV would do it.
Said it would work.
But you're, you're talking about the act of donation, though, right? Which would be proper, I believe. What do you think, Ms. Goldman?
We, uh, the DMV has a form that says act of donation, and you sign.
Yes, okay.
And you'll sign the title, and we give one of the originals to the sheriff, and then when they go to DMV, swap it, I'll have all the documents.
Would that be acceptable to you, counselor?
It will, I mean, I've done it before with personal vehicles, but I wasn't certain whether or not you wanted me to actually do an act itself. But I mean, if it's one commensurate with what DMV uses, certainly to be.
And you would keep that copy on, on file, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is the same, Miss Sandra, it's the same generic form for our public community. It is the same, Ms. Sanders, it's the same generic form for our own public entity, uh, through the Department of Mobile.
Okay. All right. So, that resolution, thank you.
He was coming from one public entity to another.
Right. Yes, sir.
Forget the castle insurance. Yeah.
I didn't wanna comment on that, which is a positive. Next item. Fourteen, is Mr., is, is Mr. Patrick here tonight? Mr. Richard Patrick is chair of a committee that, commission that we authorized, but we, I don't think we took formal action, and this is just to formalize what we already did.
Well, we thought this was a change.
No, sir, it's no change. It's just formal. Mr. Patrick brought to my attention that he didn't have a resolution, a formal. We did the, we did it, we, each of you submitted a name and appointed, and we appointed that person that you submitted to the, to the commission. Your person is here? Okay, Ms. Evelyn?
Chairman Harris, stand up for me, please.
Oh, yes, welcome. Great, we appreciate the job that, that you're doing and gonna do. Great, glad to see young people involved in government. So, um, now, let me read the resolution. Uh, Resolution eighteen dash seventeen sixty-six, a resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the city to create a utilities advisory commission. What is your pleasure, gentlemen? This is just to confirm what we've already really done, except we didn't do a formal resolution.
I'm moved for the approval of Res- Resolution eighteen seventeen sixty-six.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Green, that we adopt this resolution, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution's adopted. Item fifteen, discussion, action, permission to advertise for proposals for engineering services for the Morehouse Memorial Airport, our airport manager, Mr. Brent Elton, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Goldman also to comment on this. Mr. Elton, or Ms. Goldman, you wanna ask the questions, or?
I will, it, bring it.
Okay. Uh, tell us about this, this, uh, resolution and what it entails.
Okay, basically what we're running through with our obstruction removal project is, nobody realized that it wasn't on our master services agreement that we had with Denman Engineering. So, what we have to do.
Can we talk about what obstructions are? What the obstructions are? Obstructions to what?
Project, and actually, uh, what we're doing is we have a lot of trees that are penetrating the approach slopes to the runway, which is in unsafe conditions for the planes to fly, especially in the intermediate conditions where they, they can't see the runway or run.
So, this, this is about landing an airplane, here's a runway, so the air, they, you have a certain slope, right? And the trees have grown up so tall that?
They're either penetrating that slope, or they're threatening.
Yes.
The FAA wants to go ahead and get those trees taken down.
Okay.
The possibility of even continuing.
Okay, so, that's what this is about?
Correct.
Okay. And is it limited to this, basically, the removal of the obstructions?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, I won't interrupt you again. Go ahead.
Since we don't have this project listed on our master services agreement with Denman Engineering, the FAA requires us to officially select a consultant engineer to handle this project. It's just kind of an oversight, the FAA actually requested that we do this project.
So, as airport manager, you recommending that we do, that we do this with Denman Engineering?
No, no, not tonight. What we're doing tonight is just giving permission to send out a request for qualifications for engineering firms, so that we can manually select that consultant engineer to handle this.
To start the process? Okay.
Now, Brent, our FAA, 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 is it funded in this force?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay.
It'll be ninety or ninety-five percent failed, and the other five or ten percent will be state funded.
Okay, okay.
And this is to remove the trees, correct? And that's on the north end of the airport?
Both ends.
Both ends?
And on the sides as well.
Okay.
When they're coming in to do this, they're doing the whole.
Okay.
And Brent, aren't some of these trees on other people's property?
Correct, that's, that's part of the issue of why it's so expensive to get some of these trees on people's property, so they'll have to negotiate with the landlords for moving the trees, and of course paying them for the loss of the trees that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for all that you do for the city of Bastrop. We've got a great airport, we have, I got a call this past week from someone, I was in a discussion, in some other town, and someone from, oh my goodness, Massachusetts or Minnesota, no, New York, Albany, New York. The guy was telling me that when he's flying their plane, he stops in Bastrop for our fuel. And what a wonderful town we have, and I thank you for the services that you offer on a daily basis. You're kinda out there, out of sight, out of mind, with, with the people in Bastrop, but there's a lot of good will that, that comes through your services and the things that you guys do out at the airport. So, I wanna personally thank you for the high level of service that you give to people from all over the world that come through Bastrop, because we've got competitive fuel prices and good service. We have a repair shop on the, on the premises, right, at the airport. We've had planes come here and engines fail, right? Wouldn't start back up, right? Big twenty-engine things, and, and we help people, so that's why people like to stop here. Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thanks.
Now, we need a motion.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Aye.
Motion's made by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore, and second by Councilman Shaw, that we adopt this resolution, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you, sir. Uh, item number sixteen, ordinance eighteen dash four two four eight, and ordinance to amend section nine dash one and section nine dash two of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, relating to inspection and enforcement of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, as provided in city codes. Chief, now, this is introduction only, this is not for adoption tonight. And welcome, uh, to city council meeting, Chief, and, uh, and our, our.
Fire prevention officer.
Fire prevention officer. Can you start off, Chief, Chief or Tim, which one would you rather do?
I'm gonna start, and I'm gonna let you do all the work.
Yes, sir. Okay, that's what chiefs do.
Basically, what we're in here for, this, this ordinance is to help, uh, uh, my guys are getting a lot of training and certifications. This will help with our rating, our, we'll be, we'll be able to do inspections for the, uh, state fire marshal office. You know, sometimes they will be, you know, unable to come, and we can cover an inspection for them inside, inside the city limits. So, this will, plus for us, also it will help us with our rating as well.
With our fireworks pressing rating, which we're a four now, and we're trying to get to a one.
Yeah, we're trying to get to a one.
We wanna save the citizens of Bastrop, the businesses and, and homeowners, millions of dollars a year in the aggregate.
Millions of dollars.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Tim explain to you what, what it exactly entails.
Tim, why do we need to change this ordinance?
Uh, the fire prevention ordinance is outdated, it hasn't been updated since like, I think, nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, what this is, is a life safety book.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we're trying to get recognized by the state fire marshals, they're recognized by Fire Prevention Bureau.
Mm-hmm.
And by doing that, that, uh, allows us to go after extra credit to the rating that we've never been able to.
And these are bonus points, correct?
They're bonus.
It's like taking a test that's worth a hundred points, and, and then you got the bonus question that's like five points. And if we do this, we stand a chance of getting those bonus points, will be added to our rating, and hopefully help us, correct?
One of the recommendations is, you have requirements, you gotta get, uh, life safety one-on-one, uh, adopted by the city, and then you gotta be a level-one inspector. So, we got the level-one inspector.
Now, you went to training for?
Level-one.
Level-one. And, and two, and then we've got another, uh.
Jeremy's, we threw him off.
Yeah, so.
He's a level-one, so we'll.
Yeah. Yes, and we believe in training. We believe in high-level training. Chief, thank you, guys. But, uh, now, the, the stating of the proposed ordinance that council has looked over and is looking over, uh, I'm gonna ask you guys to get directly with council, council on that resolution, on that ordinance change. Uh, in fact, you brought the one from Monroe to me a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was, and theirs stated, and you, you want this to be continuous where we're always in compliance.
Okay, yes, I was gonna say, the most current issue would say that's adopted in study.
And, yeah, twenty-seventeen is what Monroe said, and they gotta change it.
Every three years.
Yes, every three years. And these are codes, correct?
Yeah, safe code, white fire extinguishers, toxic lights.
Excuse me.
Uh, hoods of presence systems, and so just for commercial reasons.
And you, and our fire department, this, this bureau, this inspection bureau, this, that you, that we are creating, basically, is that correct, Chief Counselor?
I'm sorry?
Safety Bureau, what's, what's the name of, what's the official?
Fire prevention bureau.
Yeah, Fire Prevention Bureau. You will be able to, the, our fire department will be able to go and do the annual inspections in businesses, correct? So, we'll be able to offer service to bit, bit, local businesses, correct? And our fire department will come in those businesses once, at least once a year, I guess?
They already do pre-fire planning, and Jeremy and myself will do the inspections.
Okay.
Life safety.
Yes.
Just making sure that nothing of fire hazards, you know, block doors and stuff like that.
So, citizens will always be safe?
Exactly.
It's about safety, public safety. Are there any other questions for these general council? You have any questions right now?
No, I did, well, from what I looked at earlier, uh, I did not, I think that was another part of the, uh, protocol, another resolution with respect to holding harmless, the state fire marshal, uh, with respect to, uh, what they may or may not be able to do in association with.
Those, those items, one through four?
Correct.
Okay, through the, okay.
Correct, oh, and in looking at the statute, the way it's drafted, certain things the fire marshal, uh, not, will not be able to do in conjunction with the Fire Prevention Bureau, but I've seen no reason in, uh, not adopting a resolution when it comes forward with holding the fire marshal, uh, state fire marshal harmless, uh, because of, uh, that's the way statute.
So, you will get with the fire chief and, and all of that?
Absolutely.
Any questions, Councilman? Any questions? No questions? Uh, anything else you guys wanna say? You gentlemen?
No, sir, we just waiting on some.
Well, let me commend the Bastrop Fire Department, you guys have a lot of high morale over there. It's exciting every time we see you guys. What do we call you, Batman and Robin, something like that? Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, what's your desire?
No, I'm next, next section.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, next time, thanks, thanks, I was ready to roll now. Thank you.
Roll right on.
The roll right on. Item seventeen, ordinance eighteen dash forty-two forty-nine, and ordinance to amend section ten dash two two six and section four dash thirty of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to supplement the codes to provide for possession or consumption of alcoholic beverage on public property owned and operated by the city. This introduction only. Mr. Pierre, can you handle this one for us, please, sir?
I can, uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, for that invitation to do the same. This particular ordinance addresses, uh, the new, uh, technology center specifically, uh, the ordinance as in its current state gives an exemption to the municipal center, uh, so when events are there, uh, I guess as an effort of increased marketability, you know, to allow individuals who do rent the facility to be able to have alcoholic beverages on the premises. Of course, you know that comes with.
So, is this the same as we have for the municipal center right now?
Exactly the same, we're just adding it into the technology center, so that it can be also on the same level of marketability. You don't wanna exclude our folk who may need a smaller venue, uh, than a municipal center, because they wouldn't be able to have those alcoholic beverages there. Same protocol will be in place with respect to security and things of that nature, whatever measures that, uh, uh, the government is gonna require from them. So, nothing changes, the only thing that's added in this ordinance is to tag at the end of that particular provision, the, uh, technology center, so it can be used, uh, in a similar fashion as the municipal center.
Any questions? Well?
No.
Okay.
Well, I have one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you're having technology training or whatever over there, and you're having young people there, how do you exclude?
There's no alcohol in the building. People who rent it will bring theirs, and they'll leave with every bottle, just like the municipal center. When we rent the municipal center out for birthdays and things, that doesn't require we have kids in there every year to, with singing and all kinds of things, there's zero alcohol in there during, except when those people, the club wants to come and bring and serve, you know, serve their alcohol, when they leave, every bottle leaves with them. So, there's no, you know, it's not like going in, in a place, in a nightclub, where there's alcohol there, all behind the, behind the counter and trying to get kids in there. So, that's how we address that, uh, Councilman.
So, who, who enforces it then?
Same way we do it, we enforce the municipal center right now, Chief of Police, yes, sir. Nothing changes. Yes, sir. We're gonna treat it just like we treat the municipal center.
Okay. And this is exclusive, look, just for that one building, in addition to?
Absolutely, it's, uh.
The parks and all that need to be off limits.
It's, it's, the, the, the specific ordinance tracks the exact same language that was, that was there before, which, uh, has the exclusion for the parks and recreational centers, and it only places an, it placed an exception for the municipal center, we just add it and the technology center. So, all other prohibitions are still in place. Right.
Okay, good question. Any other?
No action.
Okay, all, um, what's your pleasure?
No action.
Oh, no action. Ready to roll.
This is next month.
Okay, next month. Okay, thanks. Okay, item seventeen, is it?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
Uh, nineteen, we want it nineteen.
No, discussion. Bastrop Industrial Development Board, uh, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Pierre, uh, the Industrial Development Board, I'm gonna ask Ms. K. King, can you come forward real quick, if you don't mind? And, uh, Mr. Pierre, uh, you have been doing, um, you can tell us about industrial development boards, and Ms. King can also, so I'm just gonna ask you to, to just flow with this, and, uh, Counsel, you wanna start it off?
I can, uh, uh, when posed with the responsibility of investigating slash, uh, coming in and having a discussion with, uh, the members of, uh, the alderman board, uh, council, I did, of course, reach out to my wife first, uh, being that's part and parcel of what she does with Louisiana, I mean, North Louisiana Economic Partnership, um, certain, uh, Ms. King knows my wife well, and, uh, she did put together some research for us, and, uh, have indicated that each municipality is encouraged, you know, to create its industrial development board, and because there are certain things that you can do as a board, that of course, uh, is offered tax incentive incentives, you know, to businesses to come in and, and locate here, or to bring business to your community, i.e. bring jobs to the community. What I would like to do, and I'll defer to Ms. King to give you the particulars on other things, is that I would like to discuss with you, how do you get started? Uh, the revised statute is more found, more specifically found in Title fifty-one of the revised code, uh, provides that you can create a municipal, uh, industrial board, you know, under certain conditions. One, you have to have three registered electors to come in and petition this body that they want to create this board, so you can't just drop a resolution before your council and say, hey, look, let's create, uh, an industrial development board. You have to get three electors to come in and petition you all, so that, uh, this can be done. Once that's done, then of course you can come, uh, off of that, create an ordinance and things of that nature. Now, there are some specific things that you all need to be aware of, uh, and I think that, uh, there is a draft, uh, with respect to that resolution that you're gonna need, and, but there are some, some statutory requirements that have to be inside of that resolution. Also, it has to be a part of the documents, the legal documents associated with that board. Now, that board is an independent board of you all, even though you all are gonna do appointments. But by statute, certain things have to happen, and I'll go through that little quick list with you in a second. Uh, the first thing you're gonna have to do is they're gonna have to incorporate, which means that it's gonna be a chapter twelve corporation, which is, uh, as we call in the law, a juridical person. That particular board will have its own identity as a juridical person. And as such, that board will have, uh, the authority to do certain things, that board can go out and get bonds, you know, for, uh, business endeavors. That board can go out and it can, uh, put together packages, uh, to make it attractive for businesses to come and relocate, and to, uh, not relocate, but come and do business with your municipality, things of that nature, but you have to have those things.
Can the board, can the board own property?
Board can own property, and that's one of the, the large benefits of it, if a company comes in and, uh, uh, they wanna do business here, they can ask that board to put together what is that incentive package, and one of those is, I think, is the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, whereby, uh, the board would put together a package to increase the, uh, uh, the feasibility of that particular company coming and doing business here within your municipality. As such, they can put things in place such as, uh, more or less, everybody knows, everybody, no one wants to pay property taxes, but they can negotiate with the entity and opportunity in lieu of paying the taxes to the government, uh, uh, Bastrop, to, to Bastrop, uh, city government, that they could pay, make those, uh, reduce payments in whatever denomination or fraction they may wanna do for whatever period of time, uh, to create an incentive for them to come and do business. Now, there is other state incentives that they can look at as well, but this board will have the opportunity to put packages together, and, and, and be mindful, you, you know, it's not for your blessing. But hopefully, since you all are putting, would be putting these members on, in place who are gonna be on this board, they would, you know, work in conjunction with what the, the efforts and desires of this body.
So you're saying that they have the power, pilot, to payment in lieu of taxes, where they can create, say you're gonna create some jobs, then we would lose, the, 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 the city could possibly lose some tax dollars upfront, which is normal for the business development, I'm gonna ask Kay to talk about that also.
You could, you could, or it could be structured in a way whereby those, those pilot monies, you know, could funnel back to the city for a purpose of, uh, uh, structure, and things of that nature, so it's ways in which you can work with your industrial development board so that you don't take a big total loss over that, those formative years.
And, and it's not a total loss if it creates jobs, right? It creates commerce, sales taxes and things like that, jobs for our people. Go ahead, Mr.
To supersede this council?
It is, it is an independent body, created by the.
They supersede the council?
They do not supersede, so that's, I, I guess, let me make sure that I'm clear on this. This will be a corporation that is created by special legislation of this body. These individuals who will serve on this board will be by your appointments. You follow me, so people, I'm certain that you're gonna trust, gonna have the city's best interests at heart. That body, that juridical person, that industrial development board can go out and take actions. You know, it can generate monies for purposes of build, for example, I was looking at one just recently whereby, uh, they went out, uh, uh, one, uh, industrial development board went out, got a bond, and built a Walmart in that area. But I mean, I'm just saying, you can do, it can do different things, so when you say supersede the council, it's not a superstition, it's like you're working with a board.
I'm gonna ask Kay to weigh in on this because I, I, what I hear is, is that what you do is, Kay, help me with this. Uh, generally, the, the advantage is, is that you already know what this, the public, the police jury, or the city is willing to give up, is that correct?
That's correct, but let me explain a little bit because this is very complex, and we have, um, um, David Wolf, who really specializes in his, uh, his in-.
And he's with a firm in New Orleans called Adams and Reed, yes.
And they specialize in structuring these things, so let me give you a little background on what brought this on, I'm sorry, for you. Back when Governor Tom Bell Edwards came into office, uh, he said he didn't like the fact that until, at that point, what would happen when you had a business come in that, uh, was in economic development, would put together a package, they call it, an industrial tax exemption, many of you may be familiar with that, that you had no influence into that at all, that, that the, was in economic development, decided that this was a good project and, you know, create jobs, so they could waive the, uh, the property taxes for five and possibly ten years, you know, those would be up for renewal, so.
And, and these things are competitive because other communities are waiving taxes, correct? So this is part of being competitive for business.
So do we have, do the council have any, I'm sorry, Ms. Kay, do, do the council have any say-so?
Well, you appoint the people.
Yeah, we appoint.
But once we appoint, we have no say-so after that point?
And, and, um.
You give your wishes.
I never worked on things, I know that it was very instrumental in bringing graphics packaging to Washington Parish, that they put together back this industrial tax board. Because what happened, if you have a big company come in here and they say, we wanna locate in your town, that if, if they have to come to the city council and air everything out in the city council, then everybody in the nation knows what they're doing. So, but let me tell you the advantage of this, before, when they had what they called the ITAP, but it was, uh, the industrial tax exemption program, that you had no sign, you know, that these companies would come and they would get this tax exemption. So the pilot program that, uh, if, um, Mr. Pierre is talking about, is that now you have, the community, there's input, you can have people in the community, they don't have to bring it into this board, air it out loud, where everybody knows what everyone's doing. And you can do this thing called a payment in lieu of taxes, but it has to have local approval. And so the only way you can get local approval, other than using one of these industrial development boards, is to come to four public bodies. Now, what you can do with these payment in lieu of taxes is you don't have to give up the first ten years of taxes, you can say, you can structure it any way you want, but you can come in at the very beginning and you can say, hey, we're willing to give you the first three years tax-free, uh, to help you recruit the cost of building this plant, but then we'll stretch the rest of the, the taxes out, where we give you the equivalent of what the ten-year industrial tax exemption would be, but we're gonna say, we wanna start collecting from either year one or year four, or, you know, you have some flexibility.
Ten years.
So that's what this board, one of the functions is to be able to do one of these payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot program. Because, uh, if I had to go, and this is particularly useful in the parish, if I have to go to every tax entity in the parish, I have to go to the school board, I have to go, that when a big plant comes in, says, I'm interested in this site, that it might take three or four months before I get it to all these public meetings, and by that time, everybody knows, and I can tell you that no company's gonna do that. They want you to know what they call, they say, what kind of tax incentives are available, what kinda tax incentives you have available. And if you don't have any tax incentives in your toolbox, they're gonna have some like that. So we have to have people on these boards that really understand and have the best interest of the community, you need to have good people on the board. Now, I've been working with the parish, and there were two of these at one time, and so what we're trying to do with the parish, what we think we're gonna do is, we're gonna take the old structure and, and we'll fix it, we can just robot it, then we don't have to have an infore. So now, we're gonna have people on the parish board, also be included, also include city, city people.
Because we're in the parish.
Parish, it's a parish-wide government, before I see that the city board might come into play, would be if we did some, uh, and in, in past, we sold bonds, uh, when, when we talked, now Johnny Foligno, you recognize some of these names, and they sold bonds, and International Paper Bill, Robert, we're familiar with this, the reclaim, all of the big reclaim and, uh, the, the ponds, I don't want sixty-five, to reduce, uh, pollution, and this industrial tax, industrial development board sold bonds, they held these properties in their name until the bonds were paid off, some of those bonds, I couldn't have it paid off, because when I took this job, I had people calling me, asking me about the industrial development board and the bonds, and those industrial development boards had kinda disappeared. And that's exactly the same thing that happened in Washington Parish. But now with the laws, or with the complications of this, uh, industrial, uh, the loss of this industrial tax exemptions, which was almost, always kind of an automatic mistake from good people, but with the loss of being able to just hand that over and having to get all of this local input and local approval, that these industrial tax, I mean, industrial development boards are coming back into fashion, I would call it. That way, the usefulness, uh, in, in doing that, and having that body in place to kinda be able to negotiate is more, um, uh, desirable. Now, I don't know the, the details of this, I think it's a little bit too much for this, so maybe we, we might wanna schedule a meeting.
Yeah.
Sorry that, I think, verified you were the only one that came to our meeting this summer. But you can do great things with this, with, uh, tax, uh, increment financing, we can develop districts, and, and we can do some of that through the city council. We don't have to have an industrial development board, but if you need somebody, you can actually hold the title of land, and these industrial development boards are great. When I worked in Washington Parish, and I researched a lot, there were many properties that I would see on the tax law that were in the name of the Washington, uh, industrial development board. Some of the century lane was originally in that, in that industrial development board. So this is a tool, it's a tool in the toolbox for economic development. And I would say that, I think, that I can tell by the expression on some of the faces, that you need more information, and this is not the place.
Question, Mr. King, um, what is, how does MIDA fit, fit into this?
MIDA doesn't fit at all.
So what do we, what's gonna happen to MIDA, I mean, is it gonna be abolished, or if this goes?
Are you talking about the old MED district?
Yeah.
No, the MED district, and the MIDA and the MED district are not the same, but the MED.
Now, MED is Morehouse Economic Development District, yes.
And that, it was created by a legislative act, but it was never funded, so there was never any money to fund it.
Wasn't there a one-mill tax on once? We tried to get, we tried to get a one-mill tax to fund it to about ninety thousand dollars a year to.
Voted down.
Voted down, the people of Morehouse Parish voted not to fund our economic development effort.
So the industrial development boards are under the authority, so to speak, they are completely appointed by the municipality or parish. They're not appointed by different groups, you know, the, the MED, the way that was set up, and the MED was a legislative act, it's state governed, and this is a local initiative.
Let me, one other quick.
Apples and our.
One other quick question. What do you have an, a board for each entity, governmental entity? In other words, would the city have one, would the parish have one, would the school board have one?
So.
So how does that fit?
Well, I, I mean, and that's, uh, that's a, that's a more discussion than what we need here. We need to have, um, a informative type meeting, and I'm sorry that you missed the one that David Wolf, uh, put.
Yeah, and school boards generally don't do economic development, except provide good schools. You know, they, they don't, you know, they don't do, it's parishes and cities generally that, that, you know, has economic development.
Honestly, the parish board, from my standpoint, the parish board is more equal to me as a whole, because it comes from our parish. And we have taxes coming from our parish, we have sheriff's office, school board, uh, in Bastrop, we have Bastrop, we have Rose, we got Rose. And so the city of Bastrop covers the whole parish.
And, and then, when you talk about that, yeah, the city of Bastrop, we just applied to get three, uh, uh, opportunity zones in our three low-income census tracts. And, of course, the city is different from the parish in that the parish is roughly agricultural. Most of the fo- focus on the parish, if you went to the, if you went to the Chamber Vanquitt, where we had the Commission of Agriculture speak, the whole focus of the meeting was about agriculture, and, and, uh, when you talk about Morehouse Parish outside the city, outside the urban area, the focus is mostly on agriculture, and agriculture is the big stick. You know, our motto was, uh, Morehouse Parish where industry and agriculture meet, where we were once about fifty percent agriculture and once about fifty percent industry when we had IP. Uh, that dynamic has changed a lot, and the focus is not on urban areas, we've got particular problems in Bastrop that needs to be, uh, addressed by Bastrop people, we're more of an urban, yeah.
I could see that the Bastrop board would be able to handle some things, and probably look at some things that belong inside the city of Bastrop. But keep in mind that the, the police jury collects taxes inside the city of Bastrop also.
And, and that's, that's why, it's a good point, that's why we wanna make sure that the citizens of Bastrop, because we do pay parish taxes for the same thing that people in the parish pay. And often, we don't get the level of service from those, we don't get the bang from the buck for, you know, the drainage taxes and all the things that we pay as parish-wide. So, we want equity and fairness with the, with all of these things, and, and, uh, people in the city have been short-changed on a lot of things because we pay the same exact millage as.
No, no, it's not the exact millage, it's probably less millage than, than the parish.
I mean, for some things, I'm talking about for, I'm talking about those things, those specific things.
To get it out of Bastrop, you gotta get it through the parish sometimes.
Yes, right.
But, uh, but in, in looking at that, and of course, I live outside the city, uh, I can tell you, and I can say this from a personal standpoint, that people in the parish, in the city of Bastrop, getting all the money, because you collect all these sales tax, that when they go into Walmart, you collect their sales tax.
Yes.
But the, uh, the people in the city of Bastrop do pay a, a lot more taxes than the people in the parish. And until the people in the parish understand that they have to bring up what they're paying and pay their way, that we're not ever gonna have good roads and all of the things that are going out there, so. But this is a conversation to, to try to discuss this industrial development board in, I mean, in a meeting like this, it's a good introduction to let people know, kind of generally what it is, but it's very complex.
Yeah.
And that I think that we need to have some, I know we can't have a meeting in violation of the meeting law, but we need to have some discussion on this.
Yes, well, thank you for your participation, and Counselor.
One other thing, uh, before we close out on that, uh, I think I, I was, uh, charged with, I guess, recommending perhaps if the board was created and put in place, perhaps how could it be, how could it be structured in a way in which, you know, it could have, I guess, sustaining membership, and, uh, how the terms would be, uh, set. The statute governs that, it says six-year stagger term, so, which means that it normally the board would probably go past maybe one or two persons, one, well, your tenure as an officer, if you only serve it as one term. However, you know, it doesn't come to a point where everybody comes on at the same time, everybody goes off at the same time, then you got a big new board.
And that's what the initial terms, correct?
Correct, well, that's how the statute is set up. And, and on another note, uh, I know we spoke about, uh, Ms. King spoke about Mr. David Wolf, the attorney who, uh, was, I guess, the guru under, uh, under that, uh, uh, program. I have his presentation here, uh, that he presented in July of two thousand and seventeen, which is gonna probably, I think, uh, uh, Councilman Green asked me, can he get a copy, you know, I guess, of, of my research, and I don't think there's gonna be a problem with that, I just.
No, Mr. Wolf has told me that we, that was, I have the same thing, that we can distribute this, so let people see, he's not opposed to distributing his, his product.
So the answer is yes?
Okay.
Got you.
And, uh, he, he did do, uh, you know, he worked in Washington Parish on graphics packaging, and they had to put that industrial development board together pretty quickly. I know, uh, Ms. Pierre, who I, I'm on the, I'm on the North Louisiana Economic Partnership Board, this is my last year, and then I'll rotate off of their board. So I work closely with them, and I make sure that they have all of the information that I have, in case, you know, I, I respond to a lot of things, and I make sure that they have all the information, if I'm out sick that day, or if I'm on a trip or something, that they, they will email me and say, hey, Kay, are you gonna respond to this RFP? And that's a request for proposal, or request for information, uh, you know, because we'll get these blind inquiries of people that are on your side. And so that's one of the things that I coordinate with, with that organization, and that have provided us with a lot of really fine support.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, so much, Ms. King, for all that you do for us.
I would give, um, I would give, um, a copy, I mean, I would give my copy to Ms. Goldman, she can make copies for the council. Uh, and I'll take my tab off, but, you know, other than that.
And I believe that there's an electronic, uh, version of that, Kay, do you have the electronic presentation that he did the PowerPoint, where he showed all the tiffs?
I'll look, I'm sure if he, if he gave it to me, I still have it.
Yes.
Delete that.
Yes.
I'll look for it.
And as, as, as you're saying, it's, as Kay said, and Counsel. And as 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 you are saying, it's Kay said and councilors said, there's so much involved with creating these districts and and you can do some creative things and, because you've got to be ready. When when companies come calling, they're gonna call on this community, that community, the other community. And if they're ready and we're not, and it takes us months to get something to them, we lose. Because sometimes they gotta move right now. And that's, that's that one, that was discussion only. Uh I would like to have a motion to expand the agenda to discuss, uh city of whole roof. We have Mr. Larry James, my birthday buddy. Uh, yes, sir, Mr. James, come up. Uh and wait, we've got to get the, got to get the motion to expand, but you can stay right there. But we need to cover several things, in my opinion. One is with Mr. James, Mayor Hawkins, uh former Mayor Hawkins, had asked for a uh an option on a piece of property that uh that's in the city of Bastrop, uh that's been out, I know, for twenty-eight years or so, has not been on the tax rolls. And he wants an option, so I want to expand for that. Then the the grant application for this other location, this second location, to to talk about the the same thing we did for the Diddo Building. I'd like to have uh authority to to make the grant application as we discussed earlier. And that's three things, there seemed to have been a fourth. Oh, Mr. Patel.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Patel is here tonight, and we want to accommodate you, Mr. Patel. So we're gonna start with Mr. James. If you guys, if you gentlemen, uh vote to uh to expand the agenda, it takes all five unanimous. Is there a person who will make the motion? Is there a councilman that'll make the motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I second.
It's been moved by councilman, Mayor Protem, Councilman Moore, and second by Councilman Locke to expand the agenda. Uh, all in favor? Roll call.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Prater.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Locke.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman, the agenda is expanded. Uh Mr. Larry James, uh we had talked about a different structure. Ms. Goldman will attest, how many times have we uh tried to get a a grant to redo the roof, the flat roof on this?
We, we've applied every year since two thousand twelve.
Every year since two thousand twelve, so six years roughly. Okay, and each time, what has happened, Ms. Goldman?
We, we've been notified we got it, but then the state cuts us.
Cut the.
Okay, all right.
But then we just keep applying.
Yes, so we have a a uh flat roof on this building. And I know, Robert, when we were on SS Committee, we hipped every roof in Morehouse Parish. Remember, Mr. Falk insisted that we gable every roof because we had buckets at South Side and West Side and East Side. And um um the Magnet School, which is West Side, that was one of the first buildings, I think, we roofed. And Mr. Mr., we roofed everything except South Side.
Right.
Yeah, so we did that and we saved, I think, a lot of money in having a uh having leaky roofs and having to to repair so quick. Mr. James is a noted designer from Bastrop, graduated from Bastrop High School. And uh and uh it's nice to see you.
Thank you. I'm an expert on expedite media, so I'm trying to go fast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I am from Bastrop, from Bastrop High School. I was also president of Main Street uh when we renovated the building. I got a call from my friend, the mayor, and he asked for my aesthetic opinion about what would happen if we put a pitched roof on this building that we're in. And I took a little time just to do a real fast sketch, just to give you an idea. I actually think that it would improve the looks of the building uh to do it. I don't pay any attention to colors. I did that simply for you to be able to see uh, you know, the roof. I am not a registered architect. I'm a a real estate developer and I design houses. Uh I did uh, I know a little bit about the grant process and I know that you have to give an architect, a registered architect, to do it. I would recommend, because I had an interesting conversation with an architect, I will not mention his name, that they do scans of things on these grants that they don't get paid for. And it's, uh they spend their time and money. He said, my files are full of grant projects that I never got paid a dime for. So I would recommend that a minimum fee of fifteen to twenty-five hundred dollars be paid to somebody to put together a price for something like this. I think that's only fair to the architect who has to spend time and money to get this done. But I think, from my experience of working downtown Bastrop, uh when a, when a roof goes, the building's not far behind. That's, that is the most vulnerable part and these flat roofs are, cost a fortune, a literal fortune to redo. And so a metal pitched roof on this, uh I I don't have an idea about the exact cost would be, but it would be a long-term roof that should never have to do anything with and it would look great.
And this is for discussion, it's not for an action tonight, gentlemen. This is just an introduction.
Quick, quick question, Larry. It couldn't be done in phases?
It could be done in phases, you could, you could do that. But uh things are only gonna go up.
Right.
And so uh, yeah. This building may have firewalls and if it does, these firewalls will be taken up underneath the roof, which is uh something that has to be dealt with. But uh this would be money well spent if we had to do it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. James, can we call on you for assistance?
Sure.
Uh and help with guidance?
I won't even charge.
Well, you're a true Bastropian. You've done so much for this community, community. Uh from, from uh helping with the visitor's center and and all of that, and Main Street and courthouse and, you know, you've been great for for Bastrop and we're so proud to have you still interested in Bastrop. Now, every time I see uh the rank in Yelledale Cat's office, who designed that? That's what I thought, thanks. And and so much more, thank you, Larry.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, okay. Next, let's see, we have the hall, the property that Mayor Hawkins want, the nonprofit. Now, he represents a nonprofit organization, is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
It is correct.
And he's met with you several times, Ms. Goldman, and he's been waiting on an answer and waiting on an answer. We didn't get him on the last agenda and we, uh I failed to get him on this one, so. Uh it's a piece of property that has had no interest, in my opinion, uh in the last twenty-some years. Once the city was gonna build a house, we had a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to build five houses. Mayor Hawkins, you remember that, Mr. Locke? They wanted to do, it's the same piece of property that we talked about. And if we can move this property and give them, he asked for a three-year, a three-year uh option, but I thought three years was a long time. So I asked him if he considered two years and he said yes. And he brought another developer to town oh, a week ago, who wants to do some things.
Hickory Street, huh? That's, that's my district, Hickory Street.
Yes, the location is, you know, where the the uh, the oil change place is right down here? Then you the, you got Hickory Street here?
Yeah.
Well, it's right next to the oil change place on that corner of Hick- Hickory.
On the backside, like?
Yeah, yeah.
City of Mark.
Yeah, Marcus and Hickory. And I would recommend that we uh give the nonprofit a two-year uh option to develop that property so we can put it back on the tax rolls and have something great that Bastrop can feel good about. And and I just think it would be good.
Do you have plans to do something with it?
Well, we didn't ask him their plans. We didn't want to know too much, you know, loose lips sink ships and and uh, so we didn't ask him, they didn't tell. But I would recommend that we.
Do we have to make the decision today?
We need it, they are under time constraints and he's been trying to get it. And it's something that we hadn't moved in twenty-eight years. I know it's been at least twenty-eight years that it's been there with nothing and no, no serious person to get it. And it's adjudicated, is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
No, it belongs to us.
It belongs to us, yes, yes, yes. So that's, it's been so long that we actually own it. And we'd like for someone else to own it. Do we pay taxes on it, Ms. Goldman?
No.
You're kidding. So we get no revenue for it now. And we're not, we don't have any plans to develop it ourselves. So I would recommend that we, that we.
Make a motion, Mayor.
Okay, it's been.
I second.
Been moved by Mayor Protem, Councilman Moore, second by District B Councilman.
That's right, that's moving.
Larry Prater.
Expeditiously, let's go, didn't that?
Yes, that we, that we do this. Uh, in the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? The uh, the request is granted. Um, um, did we do, we didn't do the grant about this second building? Okay, uh, in item number, number twelve, resolution eighteen dash seventeen sixty-four, I would request that we amend that resolution that was adopted. Is that proper, counsel, counselor? Can we amend that one or do we have to do another resolution?
The one where you're trying to come in and talk about the other item as you kind of prompted earlier?
Yes, sir, this is the, just, just permission for us to apply for a grant to USDA Rural Development uh for a feasibility study. And the cap would remain the same. So can we do that? Can we amend or would you rather have another resolution? Because the deadline for applying for the grant is April thirtieth. There is no council meeting scheduled between now and then. And and uh, you know, I, if we can avoid calling a special meeting just for this one item, I would like to do it.
But the only question I would have is, let me, can I see the status of the current one? Audience, double sign?
Sure.
Right, please, sign. One second, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, counselor. And I do apologize for this, but I think that, that we need to be expeditious in trying to create jobs and economic development in our parish. And if we don't do it now, we'll have to wait one year. We'll have to wait a year before this grant is opened again on April thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. And we lose a year of uh, of just getting a feasibility study on, on this uh.
No, I think it's general enough to cover both.
General enough to cover both?
Correct.
Okay, so um, I would like a motion to, correct me, counselor, to amend uh or to vote to include this second with the stipulation that the five-thousand-dollar cap that, that our finance committee chair wanted to make clear, right?
Is that a total of five now?
Yes, sir, that's a total of five for both.
Twenty-five hundred a piece.
Well, the total of five. Let's not put the twenty-five hundred a piece language in there, a total of five.
I'll make that recommendation.
I second the motion, Mayor.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Locke, second by Mayor Protem, Councilman Moore, that we do this. You clear on it, Ms. Goldman, what we're doing?
No, sir, I know I'm gonna have to redo that.
Miss.
That's not a problem. I'll just have to correct y'all there and get y'all to sign.
Yes, ma'am, what we're doing, of course, is we are asking for two, two feasibility studies. One on item twelve and this one on an undisclosed site and for an undisclosed purpose, okay? Right now.
I'll give it our turn.
Thank you. So is that satisfactory to everyone? And now who made the motion? You, uh, who made the motion? You, Councilman Moore? No, no, Mr. Mr. Locke made the motion. And and Mayor Protem, Moore made the second motion. And discussion, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I didn't hear anything down here. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay, good. All opposed, none. The motion carries. Last item, what is the last item? We had four things.
Mr. Patel.
Mr. Patel, finally, our great friend, Mr. Patel. Ms. King, are you gonna come with, please?
Okay.
Yes.
You wanna go do it now?
Jay, would you join? Do you mind if Jay joined you guys? Okay, so. It's expeditiously.
What?
Now, Mr. Patel is an owner of the, help me with this, it was the Best Western, but now it's America's.
Best Value Inn.
Best Value Inn, yes, he has that. And how long have you been operating here, Mr. Patel?
We on the agenda?
Eighteen years. We're glad to have you. You pay quite a bit of taxes here in this town. We really appreciate you doing that. We appreciate you investing in our fair city and we're gonna do everything we can to accommodate you, sir. We're pro-business here in the city of Bastrop. Uh Kay, you wanna leave this?
Uh I recognize that uh there's probably not anyone in this town that wants to keep mobile homes off of our main quarters. I've been to this, this board in the past and I don't like mobile homes and manufactured houses to be on the main quarter. But I just wondered about Mr. Patel's situation. We adopted our planning zoning information in December of two thousand and ten. And so Mr. Patel is in a commercial district. That was a commercial district even before the planning and zoning was adopted, but there had never been much enforcement here. So he, uh he put a modular uh home, a modular home, uh back in behind his hotel. The lots in that area are extremely deep. So he placed this, it's four hundred and eighty feet, I measured it this morning. It's four hundred and eighty feet off of the road. And not realizing that some of the problems that he was gonna have. But of course, there's no mobile homes allowed in this area. So I've been called probably at least three times over the last seven years to go look at this and, you know. Where did Jay go? Oh, it, uh, you know, and and I worked for the city of Monroe. I, I was the city surveyor for the city of Monroe. I worked with, with planning and zoning for five years. So I understand a lot about the planning and zoning. I'm not a professional planning and zoning department. But I understand a lot of the things about the ordinance to those experiences of the city of Monroe. And so ev- I think everyone has agreed through this whole seven-year process that Mr. Patel's residence, that he's gonna put back there, is fairly visible and it's not really, the problem, just the problem is, is if we approve it, then we're trying to open the door to everybody putting a, a mobile home out on the road. So, uh, Mr. Moore, did you catch this out?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Did you get any comments? So there's been talk of designing the back of the property, which I think is not really necessary. And I outlined some, some suggestions to develop an ordinance to recover it, who would actually add the tax living into the commercial area with certain stipulations up here that need to be manufactured or larger units because we want them to be removed if they're, if they ever cease to be used, uh that they could be used as a, as a um owner, operator, manager, or employee. Now, I can see that there are a number of businesses in this area that as long as they put the unit back in behind their property, seal it before it's not visible, that this could be a tremendous security.
Yeah, yeah, it's a tremendous credit.
Process for a lot of, and and so when Mr. Patel gets approved for this, somebody else is probably gonna crop up and say, hey, well, I wanna do that too. Well, if they, if they do it to where they meet certain criteria and then if the business was ever down in Lanta, I talked to Mr. Patel this morning, if the hotel ever was torn down or something like that, that that mobile home or that modular home would then, it would be required for it to be moved and this com- this valuable piece of commercial property would not be encumbered forever. and this valuable piece of commercial property would not be encumbered forever with residents in the back of it, that we can't get rid of, right in the middle of our commercial district. So I'd like to know if Jay, do you have a chance to look over this, or?
I know.
Okay.
What, what we had Jay do. I asked Jay to meet with, Jay, why don't you speak and talk about what we, what we did? And you're gonna bring something up on the screen, is that correct?
Uh, I'm just trying to pull it up. The, the ordinances don't specify locations. I just ask you to refer back to the map. And the map tells you what's commercial, what's not commercial. The council could do a map change, but that's costly. Mr. Patel and I have been speaking with North Delta. North Delta is gonna do the map change for free.
North Delta Regional Planning.
Right, North Delta Regional Planning. I have an example here. That black square you see on the left, sorry, the right-hand side, is the portion of Mr. Patel's lot that would be rezoned residential. And it's just so happened to be right abutting residential area now.
Now, East Pecan Street, I mean, Pecan Avenue. If you look, that, that avenue, what's over in blue is like the fairgrounds, correct?
Correct.
We need to go. That's.
Keep going to the east.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's some pine shopping center, so the property's right in here. Property's right here. You got the pine shopping center and the.
Now, this map is the.
No, we need a zoning, a zoning map.
But it, the property is right in here. The Robinsons have some property that was bought here, and then you got the, the commercial credit, a blank, basically, they took the fireworks and the, and the Christmas trees and all that right there.
Yeah. They, they, what we were trying to, yeah, what we were trying to show is that behind, in the yellow, where we have Two Lane Avenue, Pecan Avenue, Post Oak, and all of those. In order for Mr. Patel, and he was willing to purchase some property back adjoining in the residential area, is that true, Mr. Patel? There's seven and a half acres back there, right? You were willing to buy some of that property that's zoned next to, that's contiguous with your property line, right? So your back property line, if you take one foot over, you're in residential, correct? And this, this change would not create a residential that's surrounded by a commercial. Is that correct?
No.
And the city, we looked at the cost of, if Mr. Patel did build a residence back there and decided to move his mobile facility. Now, it's not a trailer house like we think, it's a modular house that's, that's designed like a house, you know, like a, a site-built house. If he was willing to do that, and Mr. Patel asked me, Mayor, are you willing to give me a road back there? And I said, I'll take it to the council, but the road would cost, I got some cost estimates, almost a million dollars to connect East Pecan, Pecan Avenue, there's a fence at the end of Pecan. And then if, if it was cut all the way through, it would come there by the fairgrounds, the, the road that comes down by the, is that the Mac, what?
Christina Drive.
Yeah, Christina Drive, yeah. But to connect East Pecan, Pecan with Christina would cost almost a million dollars. And I didn't think that you gentlemen would want to do that to accommodate Mr. Patel. So I knew the city wasn't willing to do that. So we asked Jay to talk with the get prices, correct, Jay? And you can see the red is commercial. Mr. Patel's, the back part of his property. Ms., Ms. Kay, how far is this off the highway?
That his, his modular home?
Modular.
He's 480 feet to the front corner of his house, 480 feet.
And, and is it further back than the back of the bank that's next to him? It is further back. The back of the bank property doesn't go back to there, it's that far back. And now, we could do a map change, as I understood, because everything refers to the map. And that little rectangle that you see, we could turn it yellow.
Correct.
Everything, so zoning wouldn't be involved or nothing, zoning would, the integrity of, is this correct? Counselor, give Counselor one of these.
I gave him one.
Oh, you gave him one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The comment that I would like to make on that, that he would fall under, if he actually contributes to that, and all of the RS fifteen zoning, which is in that East Pecan area. And, and I think that he could probably meet most of that, because it mostly has to do with the size of the lots and all of that. Because there is a question, you know, if you're, if you're joining something to an already existing residential area, well, you know, you're gonna have to use either an existing zoning designation or a, or you.
Would, do you think he'd meet RS-15? If the, if it's, if this, yeah, and if it's the same color.
Same house and square footage.
Minimum?
On the lot size.
Yeah.
And, and so I think he could now. You know, and I'll just say this, that, you know, this is a complicated issue, because he's gonna be going through this property to this. And, and so.
And we're, and we're not, we're not gonna give him access to the back with the road. So that's his only option, is to get an easement.
And I guess what I'd like to ask tonight is, I've outlined this, I'd like to go over this, Jay, how we might have handled this with just an ordinance, which would be, and the ordinance, and the thing that's very complicated about these things, if you start making it okay for somebody else, you need to have your ordinance written, so that it's okay for anybody. Because you can't do something different than one person and leave everybody else out. So I've written some things, and I'd like, or Mr. Pierre to look over it. You didn't get one of these, did you?
Councilman Moore provided me one before our meeting.
So we need to make sure if we do this by ordinance, that it's something that everybody can live with.
Well, with referring, let me ask you this, Ms. King. If, if everything that we have refers to the map, right? Then whatever color the map is, that's RS-15.
No, everything is not on the map, because you can have special use permits that shows up in the book as a little, shows up as a little clear box on the sort of.
Correct, and it refers to whichever zone that you're in. So if there was a little clear box of RS-15, then it would apply to Mr. Patel.
Or if there was a little clear box in, in the CC-2, there was a little clear box added to that with, with an ordinance attached to it, on how that functions to give the, the planning and zoning the tools they need to make a decision that applies to everyone. And just make it.
Well, no, I was talking about since it's contiguous with RS-15. Since it's adjacent to.
You could do that, but.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
Mr. Patel ever wanted to put that back into a commercial, we can still back.
Sure.
And, and he may not ever want to do that.
You know, it's highly endowed, like, there's a gas line setting for us in the property.
To build on that gas line, yeah, right.
So it's not gonna be.
Feasible.
I haven't planned in the last eighteen years, and I highly doubt that anything can be feasible back there.
I would prefer, I would prefer, if it's possible, to take that box that's contiguous with RS-15 and paint it the same color.
Well, you're looking at a zoning change. That is a zoning change, and there's usually, we have never done a zoning change since we did this. We have never done a zoning change. So there's usually advertisements you gotta post, notices on the property, and I don't know what the city's criteria says on that, do you, Mr. Pierre?
I'm not sure, but let me deal with the elephant in the room. I just received this, Councilman Moore handed it to me, but I was busy doing other things during the meeting. I didn't have an opportunity to thoroughly examine it. But what I do know is that this particular situation has come before this body. It has come before zoning. It has gone through the court system. The court has ruled on this issue.
What was the question, though, in the, in the, when it came before the court? Was it a question of rezoning, or was it a question of doing an exemption? What particular did you?
I think it went both ways. I think both options may have been employed at one point in time.
And the city's position?
I'm not looking at the record right now. I just remember from reviewing some files that Mr. Lawrence tendered over to me, you know, a year or so ago, I mean, in the summertime, I'm sorry, reading the file regarding this matter. And that's what I recall, is that this matter had gone. And I think there was some brief sense of transcripts from that proceeding, you know, and I'll be willing to go back and look at that and give you a better answer at another time. But right now, as an officer of the court, and, and, and of course, as your attorney, I have to let you all know that this action, action may have already been litigated through the court system, and to circumvent the court's decision by your legislative power may be problematic. And on another note, to give Mr. Patel what he's requesting by the ways in which Ms. King is suggesting may be akin to equal protection violations. So I mean, it's a lot of things that I'd have to look at to examine before I can tell you or give you my honest advice regarding what would be the appropriate plan of action to take. Now, that's probably not what Mr. Patel wanted to hear, or maybe what Ms. King may have contemplated, or even what Jay may have thought about when they were working through this. But from the area of the law, which I'm here to protect you all, I wanna make certain, you know, that I can properly advise you.
We don't want to overturn and settle matters. If, I mean, we don't want a conflict with a ruling. But I read the, I'm not a lawyer, you know that.
Right.
Yes. But I, I read the case and where the, then you appealed, and, and what, what was, what was your, what was your position? What did you ask for?
Just to issue the permit.
To issue a permit? Mr. Patel, as I recall, asked that we issue a permit for that building, right?
Yes.
And you were denied because of the type of structure that the building was, is that correct?
Yes.
Did you ask for a zoning change in your pleadings?
Well, it not been, but we.
I mean, as far as court, court proceedings, okay? So the settled case of court, was it one time or two times that you went to court? One time, okay. And what was settled was the city denied you a building permit, is that correct? And the court case was about building. So I'm just gonna ask Mr. Pierre to look at that again. Can we do that? And then, we're gonna, we can bring this back up at the next meeting, okay? Is that okay?
Give the time to look and do it.
Yeah, give Counsel time to do his.
Please.
And I, the more I'm talking earlier, and like I said, I've talked to Mr. Patel, and, and we've had this around, and all I'm here to try is, I understand that everybody has to be treated equally. So whatever we do, if we sort of pass residential, passed by special permit in that area, then everybody's entitled to follow that.
To apply, but every situation is different, and it's a case-by-case basis. You know, you're on the merits. We would hope that they would be on the line and not ask for an exemption in the middle of, in the middle of, you know, in the middle of.
We never have any difficulty doing this again. But the other thing is, I kind of hate to open the door to rezoning on small pieces of property, because we've had people that are very upset about the zoning. And we did a special use permit back a few years ago for existing buildings that we had in residential area. Because sometimes we had a big metal building, a plumber building that was out and was not likely to be used for residential purposes. And so we made a special use permit back in Pecan at least five years ago, that, that they could apply, even if it was in a residential area, and they could apply to the planning and zoning. And those buildings would be viewed on a case-by-case basis, because they're not likely to be used as residential.
Ms. King, will you, will you be available to Counsel for your input? Would you be available to Counsel for your input?
Yes, and I didn't think anything was gonna happen tonight, we were just proposing that. But I would say, as much as I come to this group, and as much as I'm against just setting mobile homes out at the end of the lawn, or major quarters, that I, I think there is an opportunity to maybe make it available to some of our larger commercial properties, that they could put a residential structure out there for security or something. And I, I believe that if people really look at this, people like Toyota or Bastrop, they might come back and say, hey, you know, I wouldn't mind putting a residential structure back, because we're gonna have a lot of people in there on security.
Yes.
I think there could be a place in the commercial areas, as long as it's industrial, it's obscured and.
And that's the question, I need the answer.
Property is adequately sized to allow for it to be torn off of the road. And all I'm here to try is, the point is, there's no winners or losers in here. I mean, there's only losers. And Patel's building is deteriorating, and, and, you know, it's actually becoming an isolation work in his, his structure.
But, Mr. Patel, you do intend to really make it a fabulous place?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay.
I wanna make it home.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay. Well, we appreciate you, we're pro-business here at the city of Bastrop. We appreciate all that you do and your input and your support. And thank you for purchasing all the sandwiches for the bands this weekend. Thank you, sir, we appreciate civic-minded corporate citizens. So thank you. You didn't ask me to say that, but I, I noted that you were on the list to, to provide and, and help community, community things, okay? Y'all earned your money tonight, huh? Okay. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Now, Mr. Green moved first, and who moved?
Whoever. Whoever you want.
Uh.
No matter.
Yeah.
Any discussion, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.